Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Upper Chichester Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for the month of December. I would ask that you please stand for a moment of silence in recognition of the passing of our long-standing volunteer and library board member, David Schreiber. And then we will go into the pleasure regents.
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to announce that the board met an executive session on Thursday, December 5th, to discuss personnel and litigation matters. Mr. Needles, can you do roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Commissioner Bahaco.
Here.
Jim Halligan.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Here.
Mr. Rakowski.
Here.
Michael Cioco.
Here.
And myself, George Needles, President.
Thank you. All right, this time we're going to do the continuation of the public hearing that was held on Thursday, December 5th, 2024. I'll turn it over to our solicitor.
Good evening. This is a continuation of the public hearing, as indicated, that began on December 5th, 2024. This is a hearing to conduct by the Upper Chi... Sorry, Upper Chichester Township Board of Commissioners to consider the conditional use application of the Burmese Buddhist Association of Philadelphia related to the property at 206 Meeting House Road, Aston, PA 19014. The applicant requests a conditional use to use the property for a religious use per the township zoning ordinance under section 600-13 and 600-20. The hearing on December 5th was properly advertised, as was this hearing, and certified mailings went out to the residents. The applicant is present? Do you have any other information to present to the board? Okay. And we have members of the public here this evening. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on the application? And for the members of the public present, does anyone have any information, statements, questions with regards to the application? No. There... For the record, there is none. So at this time, do the applicants close their application hearing and ask for the admission of the documents that were submitted previously? Okay. And just for the record, because we have a transcriber here, could you please state your name for the record?
My first name is Mary, O as in orange.
And Mr. Moon, as representative for the applicant, you have no other information to present to the Board of Commissioners, correct?
Yeah, I don't have one.
Okay. And yes, for the admission of your documents previously admitted at the prior hearing, December 5th?
Yes, we submitted prior to December 5th.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So this will conclude the hearing in this matter, and the board will take the matter under consideration, and the board will issue its decision at the next January hearing in January 2025. And Mr. Needles, do we know when the next hearing is?
Excuse me. The voting meeting for January is scheduled, pending the approval of the meeting schedule tonight. It would be for January, Thursday, January 9th, at 7:30 PM.
Then we will close the record and admit the exhibits, and the board will take it under consideration.
Thank you again. Now we'll move on to our employee service awards. Upper Chichester Township Board of Commissioners would like to congratulate the following employees for reaching years of service milestones in 2024. Joe Okolowski, 45 years of service; Chief Tom Bush, 45 years of service; John Thornton, 35 years of service; Robert Powers, 35 years of service; Joseph Herker, 20 years of service; John Keith, 15 years of service; Edward Brinkman III, 15 years of service; Mike Melino, 15 years of service; and Ray Fuller, five years of service. Congratulations to each of you, and thank you for your continued service and commitment to Upper Chichester Township. Next on the agenda, we would, or I would like to recognize Edward Rakowski, our Vice President, and Michael Guardioso. They have each completed, is it 12 years of service? And we are part of the Pennsylvania Municipal League, also Pennsylvania Association of First Class Township Commissioners, and we have a conference each year. And this was the award, this is example of the award that was presented to Commissioner Rakowski for 12 years of outstanding service and dedication as Commissioner in Upper Chichester Township from the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Commissioners, presented by President John J. Jablonsky Jr., October 11th, 2024.
Ed, if you're gonna hang it on the wall, I recommend you find a stud, because that's very heavy.
This is, I can't remember the material, but it's anthracite. Yes, coal. So we, when we were at the conference, we took a tour of the coal mine, actually went down, what, 300 feet into the ground, did this tour of the coal mine. So the president, he had this added to the plaque this year as a representation of, from Scranton, Pennsylvania. All right. So congratulations, Commissioner Rakowski and Commissioner Guardioso, for your service.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Now we will open the floor up to the residents for public comment. Our microphone is here. Please speak into the microphone. Give us your name, address, and phone number. If you need, if we need to get back in contact with you, we'll need your phone number. Otherwise, you're fined to give us your name and address for the record. Okay? So we'll start on this side of the room. Anyone have any questions or comments for the Board of Commissioners? This side of the room? We'll move over to the first row on this side of the room. Second row. Anyone want to speak? Don't be afraid.
Sure, he's all encompassed to sit and watch.
My name is Diane Bradley. I'm at 507 Friendsway, 610-717-2540. I am here, as well as some of my other neighbors. We are very concerned about the house at 509 Friendsway that was a tragic incident this past summer. It was horrible for some of us that actually literally left our homes for the night. We had to. We were back in our homes at this point now. There is the man Scott Jones. His son is living in the home with his mother and several other people. I'm not quite sure who. However, the real issue is, is the house is, they're living there now, so three or four, maybe even four months with boarded-up windows. Okay? There is trash in the driveway. The trash does not get put out every week. There is a pool in the backyard that is, they didn't cover it up. I mean, it's, but they were swimming in it when they moved in, in like literally green water. I'm trying to think. I mean, it is just a mess. There is furniture in the driveway with a tarp put over it. And it really is, first of all, it looks terrible. It's very depressing. Friendsway was one of the nicest streets in Upper Chi. It is, it's a disgrace that this is allowed to go on. I happen to live on one side of it. If I were to put my house up for sale right now, I would literally have to take a real hit, because I would have nobody who, they'd look at it and say, oh my gosh, what is going on over here? And how fair is that with the taxes that we pay? And I don't see anyone doing anything about it. It is not, normally, I'm not the type of person who is going before a board like this to complain about a neighbor. I don't know what to do. Now, the mother, the woman that lives there, there's young men and then the mother of the son. I spoke to her about the trash. She did move it, because I told her it's gonna blow and be all over my yard. And she basically told me that her son, the son is apparently the owner. She told me they don't care. I said to her, but I do. So she herself moved all the trash cans on the side of, there's also a trailer, an old trailer in the driveway, too. She moved the trash cans for me. But they still don't put trash out a lot, like they didn't put it out this week. So now there's bags of trash sitting in the driveway. Friendsway is on a curve. The wind blows down, and that stuff just blows. And it just seems that there should be somebody that's able to go over there and say, look, you cannot have furniture in a driveway with tarps over it. You need to put your trash out. You need to secure your trash in the meantime, but then put it out weekly. But most importantly, you shouldn't be able to live in a home with boards on the windows for months on end. And in the spring, we've, something's gonna have to happen with the pool. The pool is, it's a nightmare. The water is black now, uncovered. It's full of dirt and debris. I have a husband who's dealing with stage five renal disease. He is so sick. I'm at Jefferson all the time. I don't, you know, I don't really have time to be dealing with this yet. I feel like it's apparently my job, because I don't see anyone else helping me out here in the township. And it seems really unfair.
All right.
That's kind of what I want to say. I did try to call you, Nicole. I don't think I had the right phone number. I left a message. And you, I know, times past, you have called me right back. So I reached out to another friend who told me that to come to this meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming. I am aware, I would say the township is aware, our license and inspections department is aware of the issues with that property. Okay? We've been dealing with it for some time. The reality is, is that, you know, it's your property, right? So we can come out, we give you warnings, we talk to you, we've done those things. If you do not respond, then we have to take the next step, which is citations. So we have filed citations against the property owner. So then we wait for our day in court. Right? So it's a whole process that happens. We can't, unfortunately, just go and make them do it. Is that correct? Is that the process? Not the process, but is that where we at? Do we have court date yet?
Yeah. So that property has been inspected by the code department. Some of the items that you brought up are things that we can regulate. Some of the things that you brought up, there do not exist laws that we can enforce. So the code enforcement crew was over there. They inspected the property a couple times. They've been over there for various different items. There's currently violations open against the property for the items that are regulated under our law, and we're proceeding through the process that we're given through the court system. Yes. But, but, so the way it does work, though, is that, like, inherently, you have property rights, right? And sometimes, we don't like what we see on people's properties. We don't think it's up to what we would want. However, if a law doesn't exist that says that they're prohibited from doing that, there's, there's really nothing you can do, right? Some things are prohibited, and there are things that we can do. Now, there is minimal way that we can compel someone to do something. Our, what we can do is, we can levy a fine against them and try to take them through the lower court system. And then they can choose, when they either pay the fine and, or to go in front of the judge, and typically, they try to work it out. However, I can tell you, in situations that we've been dealing with for, I mean, there's over 6,000 properties in the township. I've been here for over nine years now. Some of these do get drawn out over a long period of time through the court system. This is actively being worked on.
George, I got a couple of questions real quick. The, first, the windows that are boarded up, were they the bedrooms?
The front and the side, bedrooms, yes. So bedrooms wanted, windows on the bottom floor, and on the second floor is the bedroom.
Okay. Where, where are we at with the violations? I mean, what, what's our next step? Or are we in the courts yet, or waiting for a hearing, or citations early?
We're not in the courts. We're waiting for citations have been issued, so we're waiting.
And when you talk about the, which, which item, so we're clear, can't we enforce? Like, there are certain things that...
To be candid with you, I would have to pull the file, review the file. But like, for instance, you know, dirty water, like, dirty water in a pool is very hard to prove to someone whether or not that that's a, that that can be an issue, right? So what is dirty water in the pool? What's causing it to be that? And again, I guess, Jim, you could speak to this at some level. Like, you have to be able to prove, be able to prove beyond a reasonable doubt to import that these are, these are inherent issues, right? Usually what happens, we get in front of the district judge, and they mediate, and they work out a, hey, can you please clean this up?
All right.
The only question I have is the safety of, if these windows are boarded up and they're the bedrooms, what happens if something else happens now, and they're sleeping in bedrooms with the windows boarded up? We can't do nothing about that? I mean, they're, they're living in, in the house.
Okay. So we're not, so, so, don't speak out. We want to get this documented. So if you're gonna make a comment, then I'm gonna need you to approach the podium, okay?
Again, I'm not the lawyer, but I guess you'd have to prove that they're sleeping in the bedrooms and not other, like, you know, again, which would mean getting in, you know, having a lot of, a lot of things that would need to be done to be able to make that case.
So without speaking as to the specifics of this case, because I'm hearing it for the first time, in my experience, and I've been in municipal law since 2012, so it's over 12 years, most townships have health and safety standards, plus the Boca Code is adopted by most townships or municipalities, which is the International Association for Buildings. They adopt certain sanitary standards, and I apologize, but Mr. Crati was appointed just recently with the, with the last six months, so we're the new solicitor. So I, as I, as his assistant, I don't know the Upper Chichester Township Code inside and out. What we can do as the Solicitor's Office for this township is, I can look at the file, as Mr. Needle said, review the citations that have been issued. Again, this is not fact-specific. This is an explanation with regards to other townships in similar situations based upon other townships. And I won't specifically call them out, but the other townships I've worked for, they've had instances in their codes where we could take actions in equity and then move forward with injunctive proceedings based upon the determination of the township government, thinking that it was a hazard, and moving forward and compelling certain actions with regards to the care of the property. I can think of two specific incidents, two separate municipalities on this side of the county. When I say this side, the western part of this county, western, southwestern part of the county, where the properties were large enough and the issues were severe enough with hazardous conditions. But again, in fairness, I cannot speak to this fact specifics of this, this case, because I don't know the facts, and I would have to look at the specific Upper Chichester Township Code. But from the township manager, what has been related to you this evening is that the citations have been filed. They need to go before the magistrate. The magistrate, as the township manager has indicated, in most, in my experience, in addition to being a municipal attorney for 12 years, I was also a prosecutor, most magistrates in these circumstances will have the resident come in and the township official who filed the citations, and they will attempt to mediate the first go-around for a resolution. However, it sounds like this property is an ongoing problem. So in my prior experience, that first round of mediation is unsuccessful, and the township will have to go through a second round. But what I can say in summary is, with, with the Commissioner's approval and the township manager's guidance and advice, the Solicitor's Office could look at the code and look at the fact specifics here and make recommendations to the Commissioners, and also to the township code enforcement with regards to the next course of action. But it seems like the action has been taken. Also, we would probably need to consult, again, I would have to look at the code, but with also with your, I'm sorry, does the township have a fire marshal? This township, some townships have fire marshals. Consulting with the fire marshal, just off the top of my head, and again, I'm not speaking of the fact specifics in this case, but boarded-up windows may be a fire safety issue that the fire marshal can be involved. I cannot speak to that specific issue. I'm not saying that applies here, but I'm saying in prior circumstances, that would be an issue. Again, your code is in place and has been in place, so you would have to go with what the code is in place at the time to enforce those provisions.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the public? Please come to the podium.
I guess the issue is here, and I don't know if it's any of our business, but I know Scott had trouble paying that mortgage. I have no idea how this woman with these young kids are paying this mortgage. I don't know if anybody knows any information, because that's gonna go down the tubes. That house is gonna go...
We wouldn't be privy to any of that information. That's private information. That would be a financial transaction between an individual and a bank. The government does not get involved in that. Even if the bank was to, say, foreclose on the property, the only thing that would happen was eventually, they would notify us of who the equitable owner is at that point. And at that point, there would need to be an inspection of the property, and it would need to come up to code before they could make any type of financial transaction.
That was the issue, because the, the family of Scott said it was gonna go to Port Bush. Now, all of a sudden, his ex-wife and his son, who has special needs, I guess, is in that house, because he got, from what I understand, willed that home. But there are a lot of different people coming in and out of this house, staying in this house. The other day, there were two other people, and she actually started snapping on my son, because he got out of his truck, and he just happened to look over, and she started yelling, saying, yeah, we're the white trash that are over here. So you want to come and look at us? And I'm thinking, what, what are we doing here? Like, so that's where a little bit of the dilemma is coming. I don't know who's in and out of this house. I think she has her son, but there's a lot of different people coming in. How do we know how many people she's got in this house? That's all. And that's where our concern is. And are there squatters in there? Are there people that she's bringing in to pay her to live there? I don't, we have no idea. And when you, you know, don't put your trash out and you leave dressers and things sitting out in the driveway, that becomes a little bit of something that we're concerned about, because we don't do it to our property. So that's where we're, why. Now, I don't know what citations have been given to them either. Is it, are we privy to know what that is, or is it just something that you guys do with them?
The, the citations are a public record. You would have to, if you wanted the public documents, you would have to go to the magistrate district court and either ask for them, or there's also called the AOPC system. It's an acronym, but it's for the Pennsylvania Unified Judicial System, which keeps documenting information, and you would, it's a public access system that you could pull up and look at. The only other issue, as you've indicated, I don't want to speak out of turn for the Commissioners, but the township also has to be aware that there are certain federal laws and state laws, but mainly, off the top of my head, as you're indicating, who is a resident there. The municipal governments need to be very careful about questioning on issues of who is a resident of a property, because there are federal standards of what a family is. And a family does not have to be a biological blood relation family. People can be family that are not related by marriage nor biological relationship. Whether there is a tenancy issue there, that's another issue that would have to be investigated, and the standards based upon leasing provisions of the Township Code. Again, I'm not familiar with these facts. I'm not specifically speaking of this to the issues at hand, but I'm just saying, in general terms, municipal governments, as a general principle, cannot tell different groups of people that they can and cannot live together. There are certain federal standards that apply.
So do we just live with a boarded-up house for, near, for a year, two years?
I believe, I believe what the Commissioners are telling you and what the township manager is telling you, that the process is in play. And again, I've been an attorney for a long time. It's explaining to people that the process, whether civil or criminal in nature, is a longer process than most people would like. We understand you have to live in this situation, but also, there is also due process rights, both civil and criminal, when a municipality takes legal action against a property owner. So...
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this topic, please? Thank you.
Tina Felcher, 511 Friendsway, 610-497-5295. I got the great privilege along with Bradley to be extricated from our homes on the 23rd of August with a situation that went down next door by the local police, the SWAT vehicle in my front yard, on my driveway, on my sidewalk to my home. That's the first time I was aware, which was not really any of my business to know that there were firearms in the home. But now that this son has come in and apparently is the heir to his father's estate, one of my questions would be, where did the firearms go, and were they re-released into the home? I mean, we went through a major trauma, having to deal with what we had to deal with. And I have some concerns about safety if firearms were, were willed to the son and the multiple young men and women that seem... men and women that seem to come in and feel that it's their right to be out on the deck. I'm on the other side, and I have a better view. I also have a Ring camera, so I also get visuals. I've had the people that are visiting feel that it's well within their rights to come from the backyard, come down my driveway, and keep setting my Ring camera off, after which would be the time that I would be in bed for the evening, that I actually had to speak with them. I've observed them burn a burn barrel, burning stuff after the fire warnings went up not to burn. I have also fairly certain that that pool, the railings are not secure, because I had seen that with the prior, with the father. You said that people had walked around. Are they, did they fully inspect? Did someone make sure? Like, I have an above ground pool, mine is locked. The stairs are up and it's locked. I have a cover, I actually have two covers over my pool for safety. If anyone fell in that pool, they did not drain the pool. It just evaporated, there was no draining down. If someone fell in that pool, we would have a fatality on our hands in this township. House is in horrible looking conditions, but I think my problem with the current situation is the concern for safety and who's protecting us as the people that live next door, on either side and across the street, and several houses down the street. The windows are boarded, because that's where that tear gas was shot into the house that evening. If there was a fire, I'm a close enough proximity, we have the woods behind us, all the leaves and all, my house probably would have went along with their house if they, I just don't feel like the willpower is there. It's like they have a home, it's their home. I don't dispute that. I just don't feel that they're going to take care of it, and they're going to put our lives at risk. We all have grandchildren that come over to visit. I have not had my grandchildren over, because I have a concern. I am watching them, but I don't know what's going to go on in that house. I don't know, who do I go to? I tried going online and looking for the different codes to get the questions answered. Is this where we come, is this where we're supposed to get those answers as far as what's in code? Like, how would we know? I mean, I know everyone has a right to have a firearm, to bear arms, but if there's a concern about a safety, we've already been through one safety issue. Are we going to go through another one because somebody thinks it's really cool? And by the way, if you are interested in finding out what the house looks like inside, the son's Facebook post, there's a lot of stuff on there that might be interesting if you, if you need some, if it's out there, my understanding, you put something on Facebook, unless you lock it, it's for public reading.
Thank you. Yes, you can leave. Yeah.
You could pray for these people for us if you want.
January 9th. Yes, at 7:30. Okay, all right, good night. Okay, so I just want to say that it is, we have, we have several problem properties in the township, and it's, it can be, it's very trying, it's very traumatic, and I understand, and absolutely, we all sympathize with you all that are in this, in that area that have to live with that. We're doing everything that we can to mitigate the situation. If there is any threatening issues, call 911, right? If there's anything that you feel that is not right or unsettling, call 911. That's the best advice that I can give you. I don't care if it's for a question, if you want the police to show up, calling 911, so there's a record that you called, is the best advice that I can give you at this point. Look up, go to public access, you can look and follow up and see where the case is. If you want to say after the meeting, we can exchange numbers, and we can talk more off after the meeting as well. I'm not sure what else, what else I can say at this point. We're doing, we're following the proper steps, and it takes some time. The court systems, it takes time, and, and like the Solicitor said, at the district level, they always try to work it out. They try to work it out, and the people say, oh, yes, we're going to do, we're going to fix it up, and either they do, and it lasts for a little bit, and they go, and they revert back to what they were doing before, or they don't do it at all. So that, that whole thing takes, takes time as well. So, yeah, so we're on top of it. Yes.
Since we're winter, snow removal. I highly doubt if they didn't, the last time that the lawn was cut was by two of our neighbors right here, who came about two weeks after the situation in August, and they did it as good neighbors to cut the grass. It has not been cut since. Now, luckily, we had dry, so the grass didn't really grow that much. But when we have snow, there's regulations. So who do we call if the snow's not removed?
So if, if like snow removal, or if you believe there's a code issue there with something that you see, you can always either go on our website, if you go on the website, on the top right-hand corner, it says like, how do I? Click it, you can register a complaint, it comes right in. If it's, at any time, you can do that 24 hours a day, the code department looks at theirs in the morning and sets up that day to go out. If it's a police matter, or you feel threatened or unsafe, call 911.
That's the not, that's the emergency number, 911.
911 is if you're having an emergency. So you've indicated you believe they have guns and the people are coming on your property, right? If you don't feel safe, if someone comes on your Ring camera and they have a firearm or something like that, I would immediately call 911. If you see someone burning something that you feel is unsafe, call 911. If you ever experience anything in life where you feel unsafe, call 911. As far as looking at the property and saying, I don't think that that should be done there, but not, I feel unsafe, you can report, you can call the Township phone number if you, when you leave, there's business cards on the window out there. Bill Gavin is the gentleman in charge of, he's the Director of License Inspections. You can give him a call, you can call the general number, ask for license inspections. We take those down, those concerns, we follow up with them. And then to find information about like what, what regulations exist in Upper Chichester Township, to whether something is against the law or not, it is a little cumbersome. Our code is about 600 pages long. However, on our website, on the front page, you can click, I believe it says zoning code. Any of those links will take you to our full code that says basically the list of all of the local mandates and ordinances that have been passed. And then above that, if you don't see something there, there's, we regulate it under the First Class Township Code and various other Pennsylvania laws, including the Pennsylvania Constitution, US Constitution, all that as well.
When you go on Ecode 360, though, you can type in a keyword, so you don't have to go through the entire book, right? So you can type in a keyword, any ordinance that has that word in it is going to pop up for you. You can select it, you can print that one page out, that one code, the entire page, you can select what items you want to print from that.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments from the public? Yes. Hello?
505 Friendsway, 610-960-6110. God, dear friend of mine, sorry for tragic loss. I had problems with the township here as far as use and occupancy. Moved my house in 2018. My first Scott probably bombed here. Or if we'd moved my home, someone had to sign off the township to see if we moved. There was a fire in this home. Let's just say we burned inside, they wore up the windows, perceived for people to feel for change. What is the difference from what happened? And I'm sure you're all aware of what happened back then. Windows are boarded up, second floor, all boarded up. Our first, how are these people going to get out? Hours are not some kind of code passed. After the county, the whole county was demolished. They only know, hey, we had a clean job, obviously we're just suicide. Everybody knows what happened here. Cleaned up. How do we not know, safe to move in? Why was there another, not another use, UNO, occupancy? Okay. Safety for people moving to this home. My knowledge, family aunt was taking care of us, worked for State Farm, had things covered, insurance, surfer was out there to clean, clean house, remove debris, clean up the house. Had the windows covered by State Farm Insurance through his homeowners insurance. This is hearsay. I can't say it was earned, but the fact is, it was covered under insurance. And what did you do with the check that was issued to Scott Barr Jones, the son, same exact name, different social security money? They spending the money. I ordered windows for my ass, I'm doing renovations, my own. Three weeks ago, 10:31, got them a weapon? Something 12, something. Got my two windows out. Their windows were put in 2017, Scott. Power windows, every window has a model and serial number on each inside sash. You can easily pull off the number, go back to the manufacturer, get them reproducted. How does it not get put in? What they did to the money, I don't care what they did. This is my township, I live, it's our township, we live. Why are we not proud to live here? And we have to see, what about windows? Trash, the pole, like my neighbors explained, mosquitoes, we live by a prick, you know, that one? mosquitoes are horrible in some, this is a mosquito haven right now, brewing for the spring and summertime. It's all, I look at it from my back, it's black, black is the big. Can't judge people, people can live the way they want. But my thing is safe. How did this not get passed? How do these people get allowed to go back to their home? By the township, code enforcement, allowing them to move in. I lived in my home in 2018, happened to wait out front of my house for the UNO to come through, it poured that night. Broken concrete curb, broken concrete steps. Gentleman ran over, looked over his head, ran into my home, missed all that stuff. Someone else came in to force commissioner. Hey, we'd like to skip the curbs repairs, I'm driving around neighborhood, just different ideas. Your township approved this. It rained, you overlooked it, it should have been postponed, put another bed. I'm not paying for it. You approved it the way it was, I took pictures that day, pictures of it, I explained the same one. You can pursue this, but your township approved this. Not trying to get off track, but either way, UNO should have not approved someone moving to this home. Safety feature, all of us.
So, so I think, so the answer would be that you get, the UNO is something that happens when someone purchases a new property and goes to move in, or a time when there's a rental of a property. A situation like this, right, would mean that the property would have to be condemned. And for a property to be condemned, it has to meet a certain set of criteria, and that criteria is much more stringent to tell someone that we are condemning their home from them than would be for a use and occupancy at the time of a transfer of property. So, so what has happened, what happened with this situation was there was a very traumatic situation that all of you lived through, obviously, and this caused, you know, trauma, obviously, right? The, the owner of the property, you all know what happened, and to remedy the situation with the windows, they were boarded up. After that, there was an inspection of the property, it was deemed that it was not to the point where this could be condemned, so that they could not be in the, not physically be removed from the property. After that, they have a certain amount of time that till they bring everything up to code, including all, all of these issues that everybody has, has mentioned here, which again, we enforce at all the properties throughout the community, when we get calls, when we get access to the property, things like that. However, the remedy for when someone does not comply is for us to issue violations that turn into citations, that turn into court dates, that hopefully turn into mediation that compels people to do the work. But to condemn a property has to hit a certain criteria. The individuals who inspected that property are, have credentials throughout the Uniform Construction Code, International Property Maintenance Code, all the credentials they would need to be able to inspect that property and make a determination whether or not they could condemn the home. And in this situation, they determined they could not condemn the home. So they did not condemn the home. And now we are dealing with the fact that, like you said, not they got money or not, they, they have not replaced the windows, correct?
No, it's just a fact, if you live in a two-story home, if your windows are boarded up, wouldn't you feel safe for your children?
Again, I think we're dealing with two different situations. You know, this is a clearly a traumatic situation that happened in there, and with what everybody has stated today about this property, it's not the, it's not the normal situation, right? It's, it's a little bit of a unique situation, and we have a little bit of unique situations throughout the township, and that's why this board here passed years ago an International Property Maintenance Code and various laws related to vacant houses and, and things that needed to be done in certain situations, and they've hired the personnel to do that, and the personnel is doing that in this situation.
I understand. Is it the court dates, is it everything mandated by the courts?
Jim, the longest I've dealt with the property here is 15 years, I think would be. We've been on Warner for over 15 years. So longest we've been in back and forth in court with the property that I'm aware of is 15 years. Shortest compliance we got was knocking on the door and someone saying, you know what? I had a bad week, I'll take care of it.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to our agenda items. I have a couple of announcements. I'm sorry, hold on. Can I have an approval of the minutes from November 14th Board of Commissioners meeting?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. We are having our annual Santa Sprint 5K race on Saturday, December 21st. Check-in will be at 10:00 AM at 1901 Chichester Avenue. The race will begin at approximately 10:30 AM. We're asking all participants to be dropped off at that location, or to come to the township park here, and we will transport you to that location. We're working up, we're working out those details. I believe we have a little over 70 people registered this year, so this is our highest number of participants. So, yeah, so it should be exciting. After that, the race will end here at Fury Road, and we'll have our holiday celebration that will be from 11:30 to 1:00 PM. Bring families and children out, we'll have Santa Claus here as well, take pictures with Santa and have lunch, we're going to have pizza, and each child will receive a gift. Okay, did I miss anything? All right, so, moving right along, consider a motion, Mr. Neary. Good job.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Neary. Thank you.
I thought you were just going to cover everything for us.
I'm just going to read all of them.
All right. Good evening. Consider a resolution making application to America 250 PA for funding to plan and implement programs that will celebrate our country's semi-quincentennial in Upper Chichester Township in the amount of $20,000. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a resolution accepting and approving the historical site survey prepared by Sagel Planning and Design. So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried.
Consider a motion approving the list of bills in the amount of $1,031,923.32. So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion approving the 2025 final township operating budget. So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any questions? All in favor? Aye.
I skipped one unfortunate, excuse me. Consider a motion authorizing the Township Treasurer to make all necessary payments through the end of 2024. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. So. So, um, that was the budget.
The bu, no, the budget we did, but I've gone out of order.
Right, no, I said that's the one that we just, you said out of order, that's the one we did, we did prior to the one you just did, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, go ahead.
Consider a resolution setting the twenty twenty five real estate tax mileage is at three point zero three five two mil, so moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried.
Consider a motion approving or setting the twenty twenty five fee for a collection of trash, garbage, rubbish, and refuse materials at three hundred and eighty five dollars per residential dwelling unit, so moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty four Upper Chichester Township audit proposal from Lightsville Economy Medias P C in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty four Upper Chichester Township Tax Collector Audit Proposal from Lightsville Economy Medias P C in the amount of thirty four hundred dollars.
Motion, oh, sorry.
Second.
Motion in the second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty four Upper Chichester Township Police Defined Benefit Pension Fund Audit Proposal from Lightsville Economy Medias P C in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and twenty five dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty four Upper Chichester Township Non Uniform Defined Benefit Pension Fund Audit Proposal from Lightsville Economy Medias in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and twenty five dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty four Upper Chichester Township Non Uniform Defined Contribution Pension Fund Audit Proposal from Lightsville Economy Medias P C in the amount of thirty one hundred dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty five meeting schedule and authorizing the township manager to advertise the schedule in accordance with any and all applicable laws, so moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty five township holiday schedule, so moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion accepting the extension request granted to Upper Chichester for the forty eight eighty one Chichester Avenue Land Development Application, so moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion accepting the extension request granted to Upper Chichester for the eight oh one Bethel Avenue Land Development Application, so moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion accepting the extension request granted to Upper Chichester for the forty one twenty eight Chichester Avenue Land Development Application, so moved.
Good job.
Second.
Motion in second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a resolution approving the escrow release for fifty one ten Martin Lane in the amount of fifty five dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a resolution approving the escrow release for forty one ten, fifty one ten Martin Avenue, Martin Lane, excuse me, in the amount of sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty four dollars and ten cents, subject to the verification of payment received for building permits, so moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Commissioner Biaco.
Thank you. Consider a motion authorizing the township solicitor to prepare an ordinance implementing an engine brake or brake retarder prohibition on Mill Road and U S three twenty two, further study previously completed by the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, so moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any questions?
Question, George, did we ever get an answer on the original application was for Namens Creek Road, because that was a lot of concerns? And we were supposed to go back to see why Namens Creek Road from Larkin down to at least Needen House was never really approved?
It was, uh, it was a couple of years ago, they did respond that they said that the, uh, they didn't meet the grade requirements for, to be able to allow the prohibition. So they, they have a, when they came back, they had a small section of Mill Road that they qualified and then a larger section on three twenty two, but that was their response.
So if we pass this, uh, ordinance for what was passed for three twenty two and Mill Road and Namens Creek from Mill, Mill Road, Namens Creek to Bethel, can we reapply for Namens Creek Road after this one's passed? Because I don't want to not get what we were approved, but can we revisit?
You can, we can send it to Penn Dot at any time for them to do the study, but they have not changed the requirements.
Well, the question I have is the requirements, there's more of an incline on Namens Creek Road than there is Mill Road. So how, how can Mill Road be approved? When you got coming downhill from Bethel Township all the way down, you could leave going, you guess, but from Bethel Township all the way down to?
Yeah, so they can't allow it on, on those, so the grade was too steep on Namens, on Namens Creek.
So they're allowed to use it no matter what, for the, because it's steep, it was too deep.
Right, so like it's like a, so if you basically, they basically said they can allow you to restrict it where it wouldn't create a hazard if it wasn't used.
Right. All right. Thank you.
All right. Consider a motion. We didn't vote?
Yep, all in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion authorizing the township engineer to prepare the bid and advertise the four fifty two I ninety five interchange improvement Penn Dot Green Light Go project under the new guidance from Penn Dot, so moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal for Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems, a division of the enterprises for the purchase and full factory mount of a high rear loader P T one thousand twenty cubic yard in the amount of one hundred fifty one thousand five hundred dollars under Co-Stars contract zero two five dash E two two dash three nine one, so moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any questions? All in?
Just so everybody know, that's a new trash truck.
New trash truck, thank you, any question?
Careful.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion accepting change order number two for more construction services incorporated in the amount of twenty thousand two hundred and twenty two dollars and fifty cents, bringing the revised contract amount to four hundred and thirty, four hundred and thirty six thousand five hundred and fifty seven dollars and fifty cents for the Peach Plum and Cherry Street Stormwater Improvement Project, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any ayes, ayes have it.
Consider a motion accepting the final payment request for more construction services incorporated in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the Peach Plum and Cherry Street Stormwater Improvement Project, subject to the receipt of all necessary closeout paperwork, so moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any ayes, ayes have it. Commissioner, um, excuse me, Vice President Edward Kowski.
Thank you, Madam President. Consider a motion appointing Michelle Milis of twenty eight fifteen Dutton Mill Road, Aston P A one nine oh one four, as an Upper Chichester Fire Police Officer, so moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Consider immersion additional funding for the EMS service of Upper Chichester Township for up to thirty thousand dollars to cover any shortfall for the year twenty twenty four, so moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any ayes, ayes have it. Thank you. Now we'll move on to our commissioner reports as well as our professionals' reports.
Yeah, right.
Vice President Edward Kowski.
Thank you, Madam President, again, uh, all the reports are on file. Sorry I missed last week, as you could tell, I'm still a little under the weather here. But, uh, I will not forget this month, I want to wish everybody a safe happy holidays and a Merry Christmas. My apologies for last, last meeting in November for Thanksgiving. But I did not want to forget, uh, forget saying that before I am tonight. But there was one question, I guess I could wait until the solicitor or even Mr. Neary might have this answer because he was involved with a lot of it. The, uh, the Urban Barn and Ordinance.
Right.
Did we have, were we putting any fines in that ordinance too? Because I didn't see anything for any, uh, second offense or a third offense of anybody, were we considering anything like that?
Well, it was never, the issue was never raised, um, I have to bow to Jim whether that would be appropriate to put that in there at this time.
But any reason I'm saying?
I, I believe that chapter already includes a, uh, the typical section of fees for, for offenses. I'll have to double check, I don't think it's in the specific ordinance amending that section, but I believe it's in the, I'll, I'll double check the chapter, I believe it's in there.
And, and going over, there was one other thing, was there anything I didn't really see specific? Because I know we had the issue which we really, you were really involved with this to push this for, uh, a nuisance uh, of an odor, is that in here? Being a complaint or a violation?
The, in speaking to, uh, Mr. Crani about the, um, issue, let me read, okay, because this is going to be addressed to two people who are particularly concerned about odor. But the part that we got to, in discussing with the solicitor, I note that there are legal and practical limits to our efforts. The township does not have the resources that would give us the capability to maintain an environmental expert and the appropriate certified equipment to monitor air quality on a twenty four seven basis, either on a personnel basis or a financial basis. Also, the ability to get that person out to the scene in a fire in sufficient time to get a documented reading that would hold up in court is nearly nil. The township fire marshal can generally determine if materials are being burned that are not allowed from a visual inspection and the other objective measures that we have to put in the draft ordinance. Again, and then this is me telling the residents, I again urge you to call nine one one and report activity which you believe to be in violation so that the police can respond and so the police department has a record of the complaint to track through the reporting system. But the, the, I guess the point of all that is that the, um, solicitor does not believe that we have the ability to monitor, um, you know, fire odor and that it would dissipate long before we would get somebody out there from the EPA.
Understandable, I thank you. I'm done, thank you. Any questions, anybody have?
Any questions for Commissioner Rukowski? Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you, this must be my evening to speak a lot, you know? Happy New Year. Anyway, all of my reports are available, uh, the, the budget that was passed this evening is available both online and at the office if you want to copy. The police report is always is, is available. I'd also like to mention, because this doesn't happen very often, that we passed a resolution last month for Andrew Milonarsky who, who received his Eagle Scout. He sent us a thank you note saying, um, thank you for coming to my Eagle Scout Court of Honor and for recognizing my accomplishments on behalf of the Board of Commissioners of Upper Chichester Township. So I thought that was pretty nice that, uh, he did that. And, uh, I just wanted to mention it to everybody and thank you for your support and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody, thank you.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Neary? Moving on to Commissioner Joe Biaco.
Thank you, um, all my reports are on file, um. We heard the news that we okayed for part of the new trash truck. We should be getting that, but within the next couple of months, um. The only thing is, uh, Sewer Authority, the Forest Main project is still pretty much in limbo, we're still trying to work the final issues out with Lower Chichester. Everybody, Happy New Year, Merry, um, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody.
Any questions for Commissioner Biaco?
Joe, I, I just got one thing, I'm gonna reach out to Mr. DiMarco, uh, only because reading your, um, the minutes from the Sewer Authority. I know there's an issue somewhere, even here, there's a, there's a lot, plot of land at the end of Hillside Avenue. And they have it as nine oh nine Randall Avenue slash Hillside. Somehow, somewhere, we're gonna have to get that, because if they have, apparently there was plans submitted for them for sewer or something, I don't know. But we definitely got to figure out, the, the lot is on Hillside. We just got to make sure it's corrected on, or in the, I guess, the inspection department, everything, because it's.
Mike could probably make another left for us.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'll double check with the codes department on what the actual address is, it's just going by whatever the applicant submitted, so I know sometimes they are saying nine oh nine Randall and sometimes they're saying Hillside, so it's confusing, you know? But I'll, I'll straighten out the codes department, make sure we get it on, on the right, with the right address.
But I think the county also sees it as Randall also, so. We had an issue with it when they were selling.
I'll talk with the codes department and we'll make sure all the files match with whatever it's supposed to be.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, thank you, um, moving on to Mr. Needles, do you have any updates for us?
Uh, good evening, everybody, I'd also like to wish everybody a happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Just, uh, like to thank the board for, uh, getting through the agenda today and, uh, passing all the motions, including the budget. Everybody from the staff has been working really hard this year, I felt like it was a very productive year for us, we advanced the township, made a lot of improvements, uh, and got better at what we do, which is what we strive for every year. So just, uh, looking forward to, uh, finishing up the year in December and getting started again in January. Speaking with, uh, Madam President, we will be, uh, giving some presentation, uh, similar to like the budget presentation in January of all the departments, just highlighting their accomplishments in twenty twenty four and kind of outlining some of the goals for twenty twenty five as well, thank you.
Thank you, moving on to our engineer, Mr. Seoka.
Thank you, Madam President, just one quick update, uh, twenty twenty one Green Light Go I ninety five fifty two project. We did have a, a meeting, um, out at, at the site with, um, our traffic engineer and Penn Dot for poles, pole sighting. Uh, and we did, um, review that with Public Works Department. And the, um, Co-Stars, um, order has been, uh, put in for that, uh, for that equipment. And you, tonight you authorized us to do the, uh, the, the specifications, um, for the actual work to install those poles, but we, we have that. Since the longest lead time item is the actual poles being ordered, um, that has, that is moving forward right now, so just wanted to update you on that, that's all I have.
Thank you. And we'll, um, moving on to our solicitor report.
Mr. Crani has nothing new to add at this time, thank you.
Thank you, I'll close out with a few comments, um. Just want to, um, for anyone that didn't know, um, we were featured in the spirit for our annual Veterans Day Breakfast, there's a nice article in there by Loretta Rogers, um, I have a copy here if you'd like to see it, I'm sure we have one in the office as well. So I'd like to thank the staff, um, that, and commissioners that always come out and support that event. And just to reiterate, we had, um, we also had a lovely, our first annual Christmas tree lighting celebration that was on Friday, November the twenty ninth. That will be our annual location at the, um, given location at the Wawa Achai Meeting House. That was well attended, we had several groups that attended, um, to perform several, um, musical, there were several musical performances, freezing cold. But we do want to, um, thank our sponsors, which was C Biz I N R, um, S and T Bank. We also, Wawa as well, and, um, what's the new bakery? Blue Cherry Ice Cream, yes, thank you, um, they were sponsors of that event. We had, um, we're also having our Santa Sprint, as I mentioned earlier, as well as our holiday celebration, um, bring the children out to have pizza with Santa Claus and get yourself a gift. Couple other items to close out the year, I want to, um, acknowledge the staff um, here at the township for their hard work throughout the year. We appreciate everything that you do. Um, we appreciate everything that you do on behalf of, uh, the Board of Commissioners, you make us look good. Um, we also like to, um, thank our volunteers as well. We, we absolutely couldn't do any other programs throughout the township with our volunteers. And that's from our fire, fire police, um, emergency management, library. Um, no, I'm gonna forget somebody, but anyway, all of our volunteers, our health department. Um, so, um, we are gonna have our staff and volunteer appreciation in January, so be on the lookout for that invitation. Um, as George mentioned, um, I'm looking forward to having, um, hearing about all the hard work that departments have done. And we want to make this an annual event, hopefully we can do this again annually. Um, where department heads will present their, um, accomplishments throughout the year and what their goals are for the current year, um, or they are, should I say, the upcoming year. I think it's equally important to mention, um, that this board, um, did not have a tax increase this year as well. So our millage rate stayed flat, I think we're in our, what, 15th year?
Yeah, and I resolved your issue because you were on before December the year before.
Right.
So you have to do our 16 years, we're 15 years. When you pass the I-10.
Yes.
Right.
Which is our favorite, thank you.
So the 16th year in a row without a tax or millage increase. Um, so any of the fees that increase, they're pass-through fees. And, um, you know, when fees raised, when, when our trash or sewer fees go up, we have to, you know, unfortunately, sometimes we have to pass those on to our residents, so, um, good work and not have, you know, not increasing the, the millage. Um, and then finally, I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, all those things for whichever you celebrate. Um, we're looking forward to 2025 and having an even more, even, uh, more successful, um, successful year. I think that's it. Any questions or comments for me? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone.